Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us. There's a sign-in sheet on the back podium. If you are with the public, please make sure you sign in. We'd love to know that you are here with us. Thank you for being here this evening. Mayor Progdon, can you conduct the way of the forum, sir?
Yes, your honor, I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ben Mock, sir, if you will step forward and provide the indication for us, please.
Thank you, mayor. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, giving you the glory due to your matchless name. We call on you as the God of glory that thunders over the earth, bless this gathering of those who bear your delegated authority to serve the common good and minister the resources you've entrusted into their hands for the well-being of our wonderful community. Give them the discernment to know the difference between right and almost right, and the backbone to always act with honor. Cause us to love your law, fear your wrath, and show your mercy and grace to all. In this perilous hour, we pray for those fellow Georgians in the path of the storm, and we pray for the peace of Jerusalem. Look with favor upon these proceedings, and bless all gathered here, their health and home. We ask in Jesus' name with thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to move to the place, please, sir?
Let's let this be the wire of the United States of America and to the Republic of Fort Worth, Sanz, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you an agenda. There was an amendment made to the agenda at the request of the Parks Committee, so you'll perform for a motion to approve with the amendment of item number one under new business. Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, counsel. Next item, consent agenda. Minutes from July 25th, 2024, Councilwork session. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion or have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one, Pinnacle RE Holdings LLC. I have Mary Burgess playing Development Director down. It looks like Ms. Burgess. Come on up. This is a continuance perling.
Good evening, Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. Continuance for Pinnacle Mobile Homes, give you a brief update. We have got the approval on the spool monitor out there. We just have one outstanding item with utilities, and I believe we'll bring this to a close this week.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
So, vote aye.
Motion or have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, ma'am. That was easy.
She's like, fine.
Moving on to the agenda under new business, item number one. I have discussion on potential agreements for city-owned property being utilized by community organizations. I'm going to turn it over to Parks and Properties Committee, Mr. Fouse, Mr. Hannity.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. What we want to try to do is get a uniform agreement, so that all entities, city facilities such as our parks or downtown or anything that we have that they need, but we really need a good written policy saying this is what they're going to do, they're going to take care of it. And we'd like to be able to see if we can get Mr. Seifin to get with the Parks Committee here, be in a meeting, and then help us draft a proposal and bring it back to session.
You think yes?
No, I think this is a step in the right direction, an opportunity for us to help the community and community to help us.
Counsel, at this time, there's no action needed on this new business item. That'll move on to committee. Thank you. Under new business, item number two, consideration approval of engineering services agreement for GMC GFA projects. Ms. Goldner.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So I stand before y'all, we talk about GFA loans an awful lot, and tonight is going to be no exception. As you'll recall, last fall, the Enterprise Committee and staff interviewed several of our already pre-qualified on-demand engineering firms for the critically identified projects that we would be proceeding with using GFA funding. So we used a qualification-based selection process, which is required with GFA funding, and through that process, we assigned GMC to two clean water projects, the master sewer lift station, and then the collection system rehab, or the INI project. They were also assigned a drinking water project, and that's the distribution system upgrades. So now that the loans have been approved and signed off on by GFA, we have to actually cut those engineering firms loose to do the work that we've asked them to do. And so the proposals this evening from GMC for those three projects, you have three contracts that spell out what they will be doing for us on each project in terms of the engineering, the design, taking us through the bidding process, if that is applicable for the project, doing the contract administration, and then having allowances for survey work or environmental work, things like that. All of these dollar amounts that are included in each one of the contracts has already been accounted for in the loans with GFA. So these are not over and above the loan amounts. This has already been figured in when we applied for the funding. So Mr. Seifin has reviewed all three contracts. A little different from what I have actually on your item this evening, because he has had an opportunity to review. There are a few minor changes that we have asked GMC to make in some wording, specifically regarding the identity clause, and then ownership of the actual documentation once the projects are completed. GMC has already told me that they will make those changes. They will get those documents to us. I'll have Mr. Seifin review again, just to make sure that everything is good, and then we will be ready to sign. And so I ask this evening that you approve the engineering services agreements that are before you from GMC for those three GFA projects pending legal review.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make a motion that we approve the contracts with the changes made by counsel.
Pending legal review.
Well, with the changes that is already made and will be making, could be making after five hundred years.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, counsel. Next item, consideration approval of engineering services agreements for Kenley Horn GFA project.
So everything that I just said, except change GMC to Kenley Horn. So we also have Kenley Horn's task authorization this evening, and that is for the water treatment plant, the upgrades to the plant. That is another GFA-funded project. And so life of projects that GMC will be handling, the amount that they have included in here for engineering, for the design, for contract administration, and all of those things that will go into the whole project, have already been factored into the loan amounts for the water treatment plant. So again, these are not over and above the loans. These are factored into that amount already. And Mr. Seifin has also already reviewed this one, and so I would actually change this action form of it, because there are no issues with the language. And I would ask that you approve the engineering task order from Kenley Horn for the rehab and upgrades to the water treatment plant for the GFA project, because they are approved by Mr. Seifin.
Thank you both for that. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Motion, the contracts be approved as presented and reviewed.
We have a second.
A second, madam, sir.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to item number four, consideration approval of revised 2024 meeting calendar, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Counsel, you've had in the packet the 2024 published calendar. City Clerk and I, along with staff, viewed, and there's a few modifications needed, just because this is the published calendar that we put out there on our agenda. I believe that the September DDA meeting had originally been incorrectly put in, so that's on the fourth Monday of each month. So your new calendar, September 23rd, will be the DDA meeting. We had discussed in the previous work session about having counsel's work session on August 22nd, so this calendar that you have before you reflects that. However, there's been some information revealed today that would necessitate us asking you all to consider having the work session on September 5th, which is the Thursday preceding the Monday meeting, which is reflected September 9th. So the calendar you have before you is accurate, with the exception of, we would ask to change the work session from the 22nd to September 5th. You'll hear a little bit more from the Admittment Committee as to what precipitated this change, but there's just some stuff probably coming after the 22nd that you all would need to have to make decisions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
For one amendment?
Correct.
Have a motion or we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel?
Now, the 5th is going to be a holiday week, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir.
So this is an official calendar established by the governing body, counsel, is that correct?
It is my understanding that this was the previously approved agenda earlier this year, or last year, yes, sir.
Who is capable of changing this schedule and these meetings? And I can be specific, if you need me to, about entities. As you know, I also sit as a director on the DDA, and sometimes with relatively short notice, our meetings are either canceled or changed. Is there a process that has to come through counsel for that to occur? Is the DDA entitled to change our meetings? Is it somewhat of a...
I have to consult with legal, but it's my understanding, just as the plan and zone commission is before its Tuesday of each month, and the DDA is the fourth Monday of each month, that once the calendars are set, it's a little more difficult with TMZ, called the operatory public hearings or whatnot. DDA, I have to consult with Mr. Seifin if there's some sort of legitimacy we have to hold to, but I think this...
Plus, outside this motion, I'll be glad to follow it with Ms. Waters, your best, and Mr. Seifin, if I have. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, counsel. Item number five, consideration approval authorizing city staff for work towards identifying surplus equipment. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. So you'll notice that the new business item, with regards to surplus equipment and vehicles for auctioning, using professional services, and govdeals, the govdeals.com is something relatively new to our organization in terms of utilizing. Most government, or some government entities I'm familiar with, have utilized this forum to get rid of some surplus items. It was advised to me that we've been accumulating some additional equipment, as you can tell from, you know, outside the window or behind the hall, that we are primed for having another surplus auction and/or putting in on govdeals for surpleasing it out. In April of 2020, we had approached the body about doing an auction. I believe it was October of 2020 that we actually moved forward, getting it arranged, and so we have presented you all with an itemized photographic packet of the items of the surplus. I put this item on because I'm not familiar with what y'all have done between October 2020 and today. I think there have been some items that we have surplus at times that may have made significant value associated with it. There are certain thresholds with regards to our fixed asset schedule that you are able to do at the staff level. However, as a practice, I do think it's important for you all, as a governing body, to kind of give us direction on your comfort of saying, yes, those items that are reflected in the bag, whether we just are understanding that we can visually see what's out there, or we'd like an itemized photographic list presented to us at our next meeting to then have an auction. I'll tell you, if we're willing to deal with an auction, that is not something that's going to happen within the next few weeks or months. So we could snap some photograph back near the back, have the packet for a more detailed approach, but I kind of wanted to get y'all's buy-in or input from the October 20 time of the auction to today. Do y'all have a preference, or combination there?
Counsel, yield the floor for a motion. Action requested on the item is consideration approval of authorizing city staff for work towards identifying equipment and vehicle for auctions.
I think my motion will be to allow them to identify the properties. As for reviewing it, is there a committee that this should go to?
Mr. Douglas, do you have a preference?
I'm not sure where to house it, other than typically it's a non-contemptious items that has no value with staff involved, and it's just, they're just remaining stagnant, so that's why I wonder.
I don't know if we need to send it to a committee, just let the staff or someone...
Let staff present for report.
I make a motion to approve staff getting the list of surplus property together for review by counsel.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Vote aye. Thank you, counsel. Item number six, consideration approval of quotes for downtown bathroom exterior. Panel about cancer.
I do not have my Andrew Collins. Although we do both have long hair. Andrew was not able to be here this evening. He had a family emergency that he had to leave for, so I will be presenting this evening. So as you know, we are nearing the finish line with the downtown restrooms, which is pretty exciting. The concrete work, since it has managed to stop raining for more than five minutes, we are actually able to get the concrete poured. That is scheduled for this week, so they'll be doing the sidewalks and all of the ramps that make them ADA accessible and finishing all of that up. In the interim, Andrew has been working on getting quotes to finish out the exterior now, and so he has reached out to Mr. Howell at Mr. Fouse's recommendation, or at least contact information. We have gotten a price for materials only from Mr. Howell, and that is for $34,000. We have not been able to make contact with the gentleman for the installation piece, so unfortunately, I do not have a price for that. Cornerstone Masonry, who is the vendor that came and did some of the punchless work that was secured by Green Flush, has also provided a quote, and that is materials and installation, and that would be $42,000. And then Andrew reached out to Crystal Marble as well, and we have received no response from them. As a reminder to everyone here, let me make sure I've got it turned the correct direction. This is the facade for the bathroom that the architect had rendered with mostly, you know, the brick and then mostly marble. And so this is what the end product will look like. And so this evening, I am asking for counsel's approval to go ahead and proceed with Cornerstone Masonry, if you will, so we can go ahead and get them locked in to finish this restroom project out.
Thanks, ma'am. Counsel, action requested, favorable consideration move forward of current quote from Cornerstone Masonry Group. Yield the floor for a motion.
So.
Motion, go ahead, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel?
The material, what material would they be putting on there?
So I believe Andrew has included in your package the actual quote from Cornerstone.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, it's fine, and I'm not familiar with all of these terms, but it is the marble stone veneer, the accent panels, the corner trim, using marble from Tate Georgia Quarry, and then...
May I answer my question?
The work that's behind that, and then also the red tumbled brick veneer.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I did not...
No, it's quite all right. No problem.
I just didn't want to have...
Going to get as close, get as close to this rendering as we can.
Do you have a second, so we can...
No, sir, we can certainly get that from Cornerstone, sure.
And what's the timeframe?
The quote is good for a hundred days. From what I understand, Cornerstone is ready to start, so I think we could probably get this there fairly quickly.
Any further discussion, counsel? Have a motion or a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Thank you, counsel.
Excellent, thank you.
On no fault. Item number seven, consideration approval of rejection of bid for the work at Long Swamp Creek.
He's looking like, wait a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to do this, I had less hair, it's my fault.
All right, let's go over your release.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, sir.
So this is, this is pretty brief. We, you may recall, we had soliciting bids through our engineering firm, Ternacy, and there was a bid opening on Thursday, July 25th, in which we received one bid, and this is for the work to be done at the Long Swamp Creek spillway and the dredging of the creek. We had received some monies from GMA with regards to helping to offset some of that cost, about $100,000. Unfortunately, the reason staff is requesting y'all's consideration approval of rejection of bid number 2024-02 is specifically because the one bid we received was just under $900,000. So we had asked Ternacy if there was anything that they could do to go back to talk with the bidder. We have not received any sort of confirmation that there was any willingness to give on that price, and even if they could have, clearly, that was still well outside of the amounts that we had received from the GMA. Therefore, we are not in a position at the staff level to say that we would be able to financially do this, so we just would ask y'all to just reject any and all the bid relative to 2024-02.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, yield the floor.
Make a motion that we reject the bid for work at Long Swamp Creek.
Motion or have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Douglas, there's some, is there not a, we did this on our own accord, is that correct? This project, undertook it?
I believe Ms. Goldner may have some background with regards to the emphasis of...
So this was before I started, but it is my understanding that the issue with Cove Road, where the water main broke in 2021, actually is the cause for this project. We have a maintenance piece of annual dredging, or dredging every so often of that, but the emergency spillway is in disrepair and really needs to be fixed, and because we will have to bypass in order to do that amount of dredging, we really have no choice but to make sure that the urgency spillway and the bypass are corrected, and that is the lion's share of that cost.
Okay. And do the Corps of Engineers not have to get involved with this?
Yes, they did, because there is GMA money that we have been allotted for this project that necessitates that review through all of the environmental agencies then, and so between the fishing game or fishing wildlife through DNR and the Army Corps, there is an Army Corps permit that had to be obtained for this work, and a list of conditions, you may recall, this is the one where we can only get in there and do the dredging between September and March because of the breeding patterns of the Etowah Riddled Deer.
Right. And I'm guessing, and I'm a little familiar with this, the Corps of Engineers permit, I guess, has some time limit, that there's no urgency on the Corps permits. Do you see, you know if that's accurate?
I don't know that answer. I will certainly find out for you. I will tell you that permitting through the Corps has not always been a requirement, though. You will recall, it is my understanding, that we did dredging, kind of as an maintenance activity, maybe in 2020 or 2021. We just did that work because we did not have to get a permit. That is not the case any longer, and because we have gotten the federal funds for this through the state, that is what's requiring that even more in-depth process now.
And there is some time limit on those funds, is that correct, on the GMA funds?
Well, this project's been around for a while, unfortunately, and so while I don't believe that there's an actual expiration date on that funding, if we are not using that funding, there is always the possibility that they're going to pull that back and give that to another agency that has an active project that is ready to go.
So it's not necessarily a due date situation, if it's...
No, sir. I will say, you know, we do need to do something about the dredging of the intake, because we are going to get to a point at some period in time where the submersible pumps are getting completely clogged up. You know, we're at the point they have to do something. What that something is, though, and how we handle it, I don't know the answer to that question right now.
And I would like to add, not to be too terribly tongue-in-cheek, but I will say that at the bid opening, I'd asked if it was over-engineered, and I spoke, escalated the cost, and the answer was yes. And if it was not something that was within anyone's control, it just necessitated to be put out of bid by engineers, and it had to be over-engineered, and the one bid that we received, part of our, going back to Ternacy, is to ask them what can be conceivably do. Back in '20 or '21, we had solicited from the Army Corps, and they responded with a one-sentence reply of nothing was necessary. Now, obviously, that has changed, as Ms. Goldner stated, so we're going to continue to look at all options that, when we put in a phased approach, that we can financially do, but for purposes of this, this motion, we just couldn't figure out a way to make it happen.
So the Corps of Engineers permit was not contingent on engineering? Is that accurate?
So the GMA funding is contingent upon engineering?
It's not the Corps permit?
I don't believe a straight permit is.
Okay.
Thank you, Captain. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote aye. Item number eight, consideration approval of IGA, AMI pole at Rock Park. Mr. Douglas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, so I'm hoping that you all are fully aware that we had begun an initiative with AMI, the automated metering initiatives. As such, there had been a pole erected on the council property. Chairman Stansel and I had spoke about this particular matter, and there's a pole currently at Rock Park, and I do not think we had an agreement in place, but just as a best practice, we had worked with the county and with our legal, Mr. Seifin, to kind of walk through what the agreement would look like, and I would like to commend Chairman Stansel for allowing us to process without having to do any sort of removal of said pole, I say that, but it was concerning that, as a, as a practice, we do want to start putting these type of initiatives for y'all, not just as a formality, but just as a best practice of saying, this is how we're going to work together, so there's no misunderstandings.
Thanks, sir.
So that's what that is. Yes, sir.
Justice, yield the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve the IGA for AMI pole at Rock Park.
Can I just jump in and say, you know, which IGA, because the county had an IGA, and we had drawn up an IGA, and I don't know that I have a lot of problem with the counties, but like, the county says an 8-foot cap on the pole. but like, the county says an 80-foot cap on the pole. And as I understand it, our pole is 80 feet, and then the antenna's on top of the pole. So if you have an 80-foot cap, the antenna is going over the cap. The agreement we drew up, you know, which you run conduit or power to the antenna, which I don't know how the AMI antenna works, but I would think you would need a power source to make it work. And the county's agreement is silent on whether we can run a power line to the antenna. And, you know, usually you have something at the bottom, some apparatus. They gave us an 8x8 square. We did a circle that had a 30-foot radius, because I didn't know how much equipment would be at the bottom. So it's not that the county's version is at agreement. I'm just unclear, logistically, whether it covers all our needs.
Yeah. And we did talk, I apologize, I'm trying to see. We had several agreements, but the county did acquiesce and say that they had no issues with any antenna beyond 80-foot. I thought that was in the version that you're packing, but it's not. I will say that the 30-foot radius, I believe the chairman had stated that, based upon where the pole was located, if we had written that in there, it would have put us into the second lane of travel just because of that. So in terms of the... We didn't have any issues with respect to the square footage they allowed us. Also, with respect to any sort of conduit, since it's already energized, I didn't think there was a need at the staff level to put in a box in, but that is subject to whatever y'all saw fit. But my issue was making sure that if there was an antenna necessary, that we could put it in. That one was confirmed by the chairman, I think, of being allowed. With the 30-foot, we did not push, just after a conversation with the chair. And then because it's already been operational for quite some time, I didn't give much more thought to any sort of conduit.
Is solar powered? Does it?
No, I believe they're powered by utility power.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the IGA. Mr. Han, would that include the height discussion and radius discussion?
It will. How about the final approval by counsel? Sounds to me like maybe that we've got some question of this is... Has been completely reviewed by counsel. In fact, if I look at my copy of it, it's got larger, brand, dark ink notations on it to re-add to the motion with final review or final approval, counsel.
By counsel, you mean legal? Mr. Han, is legal review included in your motion?
It sure is, I do know.
Have a motion, counsel, that's second.
Sir?
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, Mr. Han, for that huge motion. Next item on the agenda, consideration approval of power disconnect ordinance. Chief Share, Jasper Fire, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. You should have in your packet a ordinance drafted by Mr. Seifman. This ordinance would change the State Minimum Adoption Code from allowing a power disconnect of the exterior and interior of our port to just require it on the exterior for a re-destruction structure. The reason we're requesting this is a lot of times we show up to a structure that's on fire, and in many cases, the interior where it's disconnected is going to be on fire, rendering the disconnect useless for us. Therefore, it's a whole lot easier and safer for our personnel to be able to come around the exterior of the structure, pull the disconnect, and render the building safe as far as electrical matters. Does counsel have any questions regarding the ordinance?
Counsel, this has been through a legal review, and I see here, chief, that DCA is mentioned.
It was submitted to DCA, and they have submitted findings which are in your packet as well. They had no objections.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
This has also been through committee?
Has this been through committee, Chief Share?
It was discussed.
Okay.
Yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance for the power disconnect.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Item number 10, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-19, hanger exemptions. Chief Share and Mr. Douglas?
So, Mr. Mayor, counsel, we had talked at the work session briefly with y'all from a committee perspective. We had met with the county and recognized there are certain preemptions relative to fire suppression with hangers dictated by the state of Georgia and FAA. So we had worked with... You'll see in your packet, there's different iterations. At the very end, you'll see ordinance number 2024-20. That's the specific language that Mr. Seifman had worked up. You'll see some verbiage that we had consulted with the airport manager, the county, as well as just some highlight language that staff had put in that's in the emphasis for the ordinance. Part of it is, just from a layperson's perspective, the ordinance sometimes can be a little lengthy to read. And so the idea was, from a fire suppression perspective, consulting with Chief Share, his position, I don't want to speak for him, but I can speak it, is ultimately, we're okay deferring any of the responsibility, if you will, with the permission that FAA covers those hangers even.
Thank you, sir. Chief Share, anything to add to that?
Yes, there's three main types of hangers. There's the Class A, B, and C hangers. Right now, what's mainly at Pitts County Airport is Class C hangers. These are mainly regulated by ICA already, State Number Code covers these. When we start getting into Class B and A hangers, that's when FAA really steps in for fire suppression features. We believe that based on what we've seen, based the use of these structures, that it's not going to degrade our ordinance and what we have. Their intent was, the main intent for our ordinance originally is, one, protect the public for structures that have a lot of foot traffic, people in and out of them, that have to admit it. Also, for our personal well, for buildings that are used, for like-averse to using things of that nature. Not like-averse, excuse me, industrial, manufacturing, things of that nature. We're still covering that. The hangers are not going to represent a hazard when it comes to that particular aspect. So we believe this is good, because it allows State Number Code to govern these structures, as well as the FAA, who have already done millions of hours of studies to determine what best practices are.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a few comments?
Yes, sir.
So I hope that y'all know me as a man of many hats. And over the years, one of my hats is membership of the National Fire Protection Association. So mostly related to my construction experience. But I've done a fair amount of research. I think this original idea was presented to us as a way to move forward with our airport, help move forward with our airport and the importance of that organization and our community. So without disputing Chief's classification of the hangers, I think the important takeaway message is that the necessity of sprinkler system versus foam systems is, for the most part, related to two things. One is the activity that's going to be occurring at the hanger. And the other thing is the construction specifics, as it relates mostly to size and also stories. So two stories are different than others. And so far, the hangers that have been suggested for our airport fall into a category where they leave the necessity of fire suppression up to the local governments. And I think that's kind of the focus of what we're putting our beliefs in as we move forward with this ordinance. And having said that, I feel very comfortable at per viewing the FAA requirements and the National Fire Protection Associations. The recommendations, I think the only thing that I would be concerned about is that we make sure that in the future we maintain those limitations, specifically 12,000 square feet, the buildings. I have spoken to Marybrook Elizabeth this morning about the size of that pre-existing hanger, which is, I think, part of some of the urgency for us to consider this and that hanger is, does seem to be in confirmations or conformance. So I think we're good. And just wanted to give that information to counsel.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you open the floor for a motion.
So I believe that we approve the ordinance number 2024-19.
Correction, Mr. Proctor, I know on our agenda says 19. It looks like the actual number is 20 on the ordinance. My apologies.
No problem. I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-20 for the hanger exemptions limited to the airport. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Item number 11, presentation for Fire Department EMS medical license. Chief Share?
You may begin, Mayor and counsel. Today's been a day for us, through Jasper, the Fire Department, and our community as a whole. We have earned an EMS license through the State Department of Health. It is a medical first responder license. We are licensed to operate at BLS level up to the scope of practice of advanced EMT. We have four licensed vehicles in our fleet. The one's going to be mine. The other is going to be Assistant Duke Norton, and we have an engine one and rescue plan. These are our four licensed vehicles. They are fully equipped and ready to go. Our license went into effect always first, so we haven't been responding to incidents in that capacity. The main goal when we first started this journey was to provide a higher level of service to our community. And we're doing that by being better trained, better equipped, and responding and offering that care. We've had a lot of hard work from our staff. Everyone in the organization has worked very hard to get us to this point. Took a little longer than we had hoped, but when you're building an EMS agency from scratch, it takes time to do that. But we have a lot of people with a lot of expertise in the field come together and work very hard, tires has to make this happen. One of them I'd like to thank specifically is Captain Jim Weaver. He worked very hard to make this happen for the better part of a year and a half, firing a medical director and developing protocols, even going down to have to work the software. And we've had some of our other paramedics work very hard with us as well on that, our advanced EMTs, everybody in the organization. There were really two parts to this. The first part was we had to work on some training for some of our existing staff. And then we focused on bringing in new staff when we grew the department that were licensed already, so advanced EMTs and paramedics. That's where our focus has been, that we can offer the care we need to and operate in the scope of practice we need to. But our overall goal, I'd say, is to help the community, help the citizens, and work with our partner agency, Pitts County Fire, to decrease turnaround time for analysts by being able to arrive and render care and restore that patient care before they arrive, hopefully reducing turnaround time for them as well. And then if there's delay for any other reason, we're going to help them. We're very pleased to be able to present this in level of service. And it's one of many, one of some of the ones we're working on as well, such as technical rescue, or constantly trying to improve and do the best possible to make the citizens' suggestion.
Chief, we don't believe this is the end of the road. You have another goal in mind. We're going to discuss what that looks like for your Fire Department down the road.
Well, right now, we are at the BLS level. Our goal is to be very good at operating at BLS level and then transition to advanced ALS level, which is advanced life support. So you go from basic life support to advanced life support. That will increase the level of medications and interventions we can perform, as well as the equipment we carry. So we're going to get really good at working at this level, and then hopefully, in about a year or so, transition to ALS. That is our goal.
Thanks, sir. Captain Weaver, will you stand, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Number one, I want to thank you for your time, your energy, and your effort that you've poured into our city and our entire community. It is not you alone that got us here, but you were certainly leading everybody. And so I want to thank you very much for your hard work. Everyone at the department, it's taken each and every one of you to get us to where we are. We are nowhere near finished. But this counsel and this administration 100% support you and stands behind you in your efforts and your energy to serve our community. So thank you very much.
Without further ado, I'll ask you, gentlemen, to back up here, take a picture with us, everyone. You'll see in this photo that we've worked hard to get us to this point.
Y'all all look very nice.
Right. It looks nice, Clark.
Mr. Douglas. Big smiles. One, two, three.
Thank y'all very much. Moving on to committee report, I think, the committees down below have built a local infrastructure first. Committee, take away.
So we continue to evaluate the condition of our roads. And that will continue, obviously, that will play very importantly in the fall. We have some piece of support at Grant. We continue, GDOT's working on engineering for that. And a very important part that we don't hear much about is our stormwater projects, which I'm sure we'll be hearing more about as time progresses. But we continue to identify issues that need attention and also hold the line on front end on new construction, trying to mitigate this. And so continue to do good work on those things.
Anything further?
Came after that, did a good job.
Next committee, Finance and Administration.
There have been discussions, and we have estimates, discussions of estimates we have gotten on insurance costs. There will be, that will be a subject to come up during the budget cycle. Insurance costs right now looking like they're going to be higher. And as we get into September, we'll have more information to share on that final numbers.
The staff continues to look at ways to save money on that for their employees. So we appreciate that work. They're going to be doing all that, for sure.
Interprets Committee?
Met on construction location this last week. There's some concerns that are being researched. And the construction of the wastewater plant continues, but not at the speed that we would like to see. And again, action's being taken on that.
Obviously, we talked about the chief of project update, and also the raw water intake issues, but other than that, just keep it going along.
Thank you. Parks and properties?
We have signed purchase options, returned to Georgia Department of Transportation for the railway amian purchase along 53, and waiting for the closing to be scheduled, and downtown bathrooms. As Kim said earlier, that must have a bunch of items and concrete work is starting, and it looks like we'll have a new exterior to it coming soon. And then also two new signs there at State Park.
And I hope y'all looked around, with the parks definitely being used. It's a pleasure to see all the kids out on the playground equipment. It's a pleasure to see the people walking over, leaving, and the kids are definitely enjoying doors swinging and the bikes. Really enjoy seeing our facilities being used.
Thank you. I'll take it.
Just wanted to remind everyone of our Derby Race October 12th. Come on out, come one, come all, have fun. Outside of that, they're looking at buildings and outside to help with the growth and accommodate some of the things that we have going on over there, our space, so we'll be looking here to purchase a building in the next week or so. We're fully staffed, doing great things. And then for the fire department, some great public engagement that's happened lately, Touch a Truck. They also performed a standby detail at Downtown Live, where our UTV made its first appearance. And then also two assistant Dawson County with fire officer three evaluations. So sharing the love out of the community, which is always great to see.
Anything further?
Yeah, and we're certainly proud of the accomplishment they've made and, you know, the direction they're headed as they continue to make these accomplishments in the department. The other thing is, the police is police staff, so it's nice.
All right. Next item is the executive update. Counselors, you're aware, we have the executive committee, the executive update, where the mayor and the community can give an update. Tonight, it's going to follow a meeting, and I want to ask Mr. Douglas to speak for a moment. On Brookport Park, GMC has been turned loose on a couple of items. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. So you may recall, part of what we had updated you all on at the last work session a week or so ago was, if you look at things from a 10-step process, making sure that the amended 2020 SLOSS budget encumbered the necessary funds to then leverage against a million-plus-dollar grant that we had received and got authorization, you could say that's step one, relative to meeting with GMC in terms of the entity that's going to be walking us through this. Step two, with respect to making the geographical surveys, along with legal description, necessary, or if as you continue to pour a couple million dollars into this, important to destination or par, it's important to have those. And so we're going to do this step by step. Part of what you all seen in terms of imagery is accurate in terms of kind of the conceptual idea with meeting space, screen space, terraces, gathering spaces for entertainment. So we'll keep you all apprised of how the transition goes, but the survey work is kind of important. That lead time was, I think, a couple of months. So the reason we're talking about it today is, there may not be a whole lot of activity, because in terms of getting things based in, we may be a couple of months behind in getting the survey work. But moving forward, very positive.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I've directed staff and city manager's office to go ahead and send communication in reference to establishing a retreat from the elected body. The date of that retreat will be determined, it looks like sometime in October. I remind the council and the public, Downtown Live is this Saturday in downtown Jasper, Georgia. Please come, join us, have a good time, see what Downtown has to offer. And also, there is the pie in the face for the community thrift store and fundraising for Keeping It Beautiful and the advocacy center. So please come and see on Saturday. Yep, on the town. With that being said, counsel, next item is an executive session under the legal discussion. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. We want to have a second.